All right. It's six o'clock. I will call this meeting of the Madeira Beach Planning Commission to order. Uh, will we please call the roll?
Commissioner Wykoff?
Present.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Dillon? Commissioner Noble?
Nope.
Commissioner Connelly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr?
Here.
And Commissioner LaRue?
Here.
All right, looks like we have a quorum. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Um, we will now open up the floor to public comment. Public participation, obviously, is encouraged. If you're addressing the planning commission, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please. Don't include any topic that's on our current agenda, which has been posted on our website. Uh, we'll take com- public comment on agenda items at the time that agenda item is being addressed. Uh, for any clauses usual hearings that might be on the agenda and affect it personally, become a party to this proceeding, can be entitled to present evidence at the hearing, including sworn testimony, witnesses, irrelevant exhibits, and other documentary evidence, and to cross-examine all witnesses by filing a notice of intent to be a party with the community development director, not less than five days prior to the hearing. Not sure why that's right there, but I figured I'd probably better read it, just to make sure it's on the record. Uh, so if we have anyone here for public comment, please step forward and tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening. This, I'm Tom Edwards. I am a Madeira Beach resident, protected address. Uh, so I passed out some information to you, and this has to do with the qualifications of another urban planner, and it has to do with the John's Pass Village Activity Center. I know that you looked at that one or two meetings ago. Um, there's another sixteen pages that go with that, that is more detailed. And, um, I was suggesting that you may want to ask the city manager to get a copy of that if you haven't received one already. With that additional information, you might want to ask the city commission to perhaps table their vote on this issue that's coming up on Wednesday. And so you're getting an alternate opinion as to, um, the viability and why we have to change our density and intensity, uh, ordinances when we could change the ordinance to say that it would, a comprehensive plan to build back to what's already there. So, please, good, that's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else from the throngs and masses in the audience that want to step forward? Okay, at this point, we will close the public comment and move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Um, hoping you all got a chance to review those for their completeness and correctness. And if, uh, anyone would like to make a motion, we can, with no changes, we can make one motion to accept both sets of minutes, if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to accept both minutes as presented.
Okay, and just for clarity, those are the minutes from the November twenty-eight and the December five, twenty-twenty-two meetings. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marr. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll for approval of the minutes.
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
And Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, so our minutes have been approved. Thank you, commissioners. Uh, moving on to our next item on the agenda is our new business, which is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one zero. It's an amendment regarding the alcoholic beverage permit application fee. Our city presentation, please.
Yes, um, this, uh, this ordinance removes the, like, having the, the exact fee within that section of the code of ordinances and just references our fee schedule, which we, we update periodically, uh, by ordinance. Um, what happened was, we, we wanted to in- increase the cost of alcohol permits because, um, they, they do take up a significant amount of staff time, uh, to make sure that all, all the information we've received and, and to review it. So, um, we increased the fee, but to increase the fee, we have to change that section to not say five hundred dollars anymore. So that's what the, the, this ordinance does, is it removes that and then references our fee schedule. Um, J- thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, do we have any questions for the city?
I was looking in there, and I don't see any fees, so it's a s- a, a adjustable fee according to what the city manager determines?
Um, the, our fee schedule was passed by ordinance. Um, I'd, I'd have to look up what the most recent one was. Um, but I, I know we, we increased it, um, recently. Um, but it's a, it's a separate document that, that the board of commissioners, um, pass an ordinance to update it.
Okay, so I think the purpose of this is to remove the dollar amount from the ordinance and refer to the fee schedule that is a separate document, right? That could be modified in some other manner. Please, sir.
Yes, excuse me, Robin Goman, city man.
Yes.
Wykoff, you're correct. So the Fees and Collection Procedure Manual is a separate document that lists all city fees, from planning, from public work, sanitation, et cetera. It's a separate document that is adopted by the board of commission, uh, as an ordinance. And so this change, as has been stated, would simply reference that document. So anytime the fees are updated, we don't have to change this specific ordinance or other ordinances within the existing city code. It simply makes reference to the Fees and Collection Procedure Manual.
Right, I imagine this is gonna, we'll be going through other things that we're gonna find these fees that we're gonna be changing or removing the dollar amount in, in the ordinance itself and making reference over to that fee schedule, which is changed under a different procedure.
Right, so you wouldn't have to be making multiple changes.
Right.
So then, then basically, so it's gonna be on your shoulders, uh, and the fees are gonna be very clear and, you know, obvious, so it's gonna be a simple process.
Yes.
Hopefully, yes. Okay.
Is it gonna be one fee, no matter how many people you serve? Or is it?
You mean for the size of the establishment?
Beer and wine, or is it all, everything?
I think it's one fee for the-
Everything?
For the alcohol permit application. Other applications have different fees.
Well, okay, so that's vague.
Well, we'd have to pull up, we'd have to, I guess we should, we could bring up the actual Fees and Collection Manual, and that li- it goes by department, and it lists every single fee that the city levies-
Okay.
-in that manual. And that manual will be available in our code of ordinances for the public to view. Right now, it's not in our code of ordinances. If anybody wanted to view it, they would have to go to a specific commission meeting where that manual was approved. The changes that were made to it, because our fees, obviously, have and will continue to change over time.
But you're just gonna be changing a matrix as those fees changes, basically?
Correct, yeah.
A fee schedule.
Yeah.
So I think the purpose of this is not to modify the fee. It's just to remove any reference to a dollar number in the ordinance and make reference to that fee schedule, which is then modified under some other, uh-
It's modified as any ordinance change.
As any other ordinance, but it's, it's one location where the whole matrix is there of all the fees.
All city-wide fees.
Instead of sprinkling dollars, numbers throughout our ordinances- We take them out of the code and just say, reference the fee schedule.
Yeah, there's a image of it coming up on the screen.
I mean, technically, the way this is presented to us, they're not removing anything from what's currently there. They're only adding verbiage.
Correct.
And that verbiage is just directing you where to go find what the fee is going to be for it.
Instead of finding the fee right here.
Well, otherwise, there was no fee here. It had no fee here.
You're right.
It's just telling you, there's a non-refundable application fee, and it's listed in the Fees and Collection Procedure Manual. So it's telling you where to go to find that.
Yeah, and like a lot of cities, we just group them all in one-
Sure.
-general schedule. That's pretty common.
Okay.
So the al- the alcohol beverage permit application fee that was adopted, uh, recently is now eight hundred dollars, and that's for any type that comes in. It doesn't matter if it's just a two C O P beer and wine, or, uh, one of the ones that allows for liquor. It's, they're all eight hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah, whether it's two C O P, four C O P, or S R X, it doesn't matter. Okay. Make sense?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for the city? Any public comment on this matter? I remembered it this time. Getting there. All right, no public comment on this one. Uh, any other discussion by our commissioners? Or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten. Is that sufficient?
Perfect, we have a motion to approve twenty-twenty-three dash ten regarding alcoholic beverage permit application fee changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, sounds like Mr. Marr. Thank you, Commissioner Marr, for the second. We have a motion and a second. Let's have a vote, please.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Uh, the next item under new business is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one-one, amending the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan, um, which is, uh, changes identified in the regular scheduled evaluation and appraisal of the comprehensive plan, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. City, please.
Um, for the record, this is Jerry Murphy with the University of Florida, planning consultant to the city. Um, so your effort over the past few meetings has been to address this year, looking a couple elements at a time. We're now at the, basically, end of the workshops. Tonight, our major focus is on land use and housing, those two elements. But you have the entire amended or proposed amended comprehensive plan in front of you, so it's open for comment if you have any questions. Um, I can certainly go through it in kind of a general overview and, and kind of cover things, because we have made some changes based on our discussions. And then also, between your last meeting and this meeting, looking at the entire comprehensive plan and trying to, uh, consistently refer to certain things. And so there's a lot of little changes that are basically housekeeping, not a lot of, um, major substance. The major substance is in the data and analysis, which has not been updated over several year periods of seven years. And so we've done a good job of trying to clean that up, I think, and that's the, the major substance. And it's basically updating things from the twentieth century into where we are now. Um, so if, if you would like, I can kind of go through on a sort of page-by-page basis, and I will reference the packet numbers, because they sort of go over the table of contents numbers, um, if that's the will of the, the commission.
Uh, my opinion would be that's a good idea-
Okay.
-to have you do that, unless, um, anyone disagrees. You okay letting-
All right.
-Mr. Murphy endow us with his intellect over here.
So, on page eighteen of one thirty-nine is the ordinance itself. Um, Mr. Trask was on vacation, and so has not had a chance to review this ordinance. So there may be some changes made to that between now and when it goes to the board of commissioners. If any of those changes are substantive, it will have to come back to the LPA. We don't anticipate that there will be any substantive changes, but just as a, a heads up to keep that in mind. Um, on page nineteen, we have a whereas clause that talks about the rephrasing and the making the language of the comprehensive plan more accessible. That, again, is the majority of the strike through and underline, which uses consistent language. For example, in the past, the code, or the comprehensive plan has referred to land development regulations and also to a land development code. And we're changing that to just land development regulations, because that then covers the entire code of ordinances. If there's something that's not codified in the L D C, we still capture that in terms of the comprehensive plan.
I got a question here.
Please.
The comments, it keeps talking about the public input and to plug, to public hearings. And as I read further back, these are the public hearings.
Well, these are actually public workshops. This is a hearing, because you do have an ordinance in front of you before, now you haven't. But the two public hearings are actually forward in time before the board of commissioners. And the reason they're in there is because we want to draft the ordinance once. We'll go back, and whatever dates those are, or when the ordinance is ultimately adopted, we'll change those dates. But that, the actual public hearings, the major public hearings, are before the board of commissioners. And they will have a workshop first, I think, at the end of this month. And then it will go to a first reading and transmittal hearing, where it goes to the state for their review. After the states had their opportunity to review, they'll issue a recommendation. Um, if anything upsets them, or they feel it's not correct, they'll issue what's called an objections and recommendations and comments report, or an ORC report, if you want to go, you know, middle-earth on it. Um, and then we'll have to address those. And if there aren't any, then they'll say, you're good to go. There'll be a second hearing after that, at which it will be adopted, and then it becomes effective on an effective date.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, and I guess the other thing is, going a little bit further here-
Sure.
-in terms of, I believe what we're gonna be accepting is what is the proposed John's Pass Village.
That's not part of the year.
Well, but I mean, you know, but the numbers are. All the, um, the F A Rs and the, uh, different ratios are, I believe, the same?
They're, they're, they're the same that are in your current comprehensive plan. Those have not been changed. The, at the Activity Center for John's Pass will have to be approved before that change can be made to the comprehensive plan. Our timing with the year is, we have to have it to the state by a certain date.
Okay.
The John's Pass Village, not necessarily, though it's, it's a cleanup that you probably need to do, because John's Pass Village currently is non-conforming to your regulations, to your comprehensive plan. And it ought to be. Um, and so the idea then, I think, is, in looking at that, if you can update those regulations and provide for some opportunities for redevelopment, you have the better opportunity of getting a new, built-to-current-code John's Pass Village than you would in just a replacement sense. But that's not really my project. I'm not under oath. It's just my understanding of it, sort of ancillaryly.
Well, and that's where, I guess, that's what it's, uh, page twenty-nine, where they're talking about the units per acre, the F A Rs, the land areas, and all of those, and the densities. And that's not the same as what's going on in John's Pass Village?
No, John's Pass Village has more units than it's allowed, has more development than it's allowed by the current zoning. And that's, I think, the effort then to clean that up and make that regular, but that is not part of this.
So this is, the, John's Pass Activity Center is a separate ordinance. This has no, like, F A R or density connected. This has, whatever our existing categories are, like resort facilities, medium, commercial, general, residential, medium, residential office, retail, and, and the, uh, the densities and intensities haven't been changed from when the last time they were, they were updated.
Yeah, there's no strike-through underline for any of those numbers.
Most of the changes in this were either related to the language that, that we had to change uh, to make it compatible with, uh, other documents it needs to be compatible with. Um, and then also updated, like, we have had recent census data, um, related to, um, population, housing units, um, and we had the update based on that. Um, the census data is kind of interesting, actually, because Madeira Beach has actually shrunk in populations slightly, at least by what the census reported. Um, so potentially, if that trend continued, Madeira Beach could, could loo- like, uh, like, shrink in population slightly, if that trend continues, but we- but it's interesting, because previously, when this, the data analysis was done, they expected the population would grow, but it's, it's done the opposite, which is kind of interesting.
What may be confusing on, on page twenty-nine is that, as the tables exist in the current comprehensive plan, they're not numbered or labeled, and so we put a label on those. And that, that label actually may change from three to four, so.
Okay.
But that would be-
So I, I think the key that we're trying, that we need to wrap our heads around is really this, is to bring the language in the comprehensive plan in to, to be consistent with the land development codes. Because, because right now, we, and with our code of ordinances, because now we have some cross-references that don't match. We have some language that doesn't match, and we have, and we're calling the same thing two different things in places.
Yeah.
So this is more of, um, like, you know, to correct a lot of Scrivener's errors, for lack of a better term, uh, and just to make it more clear and readable for people. There's no fundamental changes to, uh, I S Rs, F A Rs, density, zoning categories, any of that sort of thing. Um, so, you know, I went through and read all the strike-throughs, and that's one thing I was doing, is I'm scrolling through this, going, whoa, what, what are we changing? And it's really just kind of linguistic changes to make it more readable and, and, and gel with the comprehensive pla- uh, the comprehensive plan to gel with our current codes and ordinances, as well as our, uh, land development regs.
And internal consistency of the comprehensive plan itself.
Uh, try, right.
Well, the other one, then, and basically, and that's what you're ex- expressing all of my little bookmarks here that I had that I was gonna question. The other one, though, is, it looks to me, I mean, like I say, I spent five hours trying to decipher this today, you know, and going through all, and I remember going through all of it, you know, but it's just like, looking at it all at once is very different.
It, it is, and that's how we identified a lot of those internal inconsistencies.
Um, there's the one, four, two, six. It looks like the open space landscaping redevelopment has been removed.
Whi- which page?
Uh, page one oh six. And that's if I'm following it correctly.
Page one oh six? Of one thirty-nine, okay. Wrong department here. So one oh six brings us into your data.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in the data, this is basically being updated, because the, the city has already adopted this and had done it several versions of the comp plan before. So the data analysis is now reflecting that an objective has been adopted. So it's in the comprehensive plan, it's not in the data and analysis, which often makes recommendations.
So those back ones are the data analysis?
Yes. The data and analysis begins on, um, page-
Well, the purple ones.
Ninety-seven of one thirty-nine.
Yeah, so you have, you have two different documents here. One is the, is the year, and the other one is the comprehensive plan and, and the data analysis. So once you pass page ninety-seven, you're into the second document? So the purple strike-throughs are a different animal?
Yes, and the data and analysis forms the scientific, um, and demographic basis for the plan itself. And like I say, it had not been updated in a, in a very long time, and so dates needed to be changed, population figures, all of those things that are part of that needed to be updated. And, and that's what's been done there.
Yeah, so for like, the open space one?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of it, the previous version, which was in like, two thousand eight, right? Where it was saying, they've identified an issue of open space. Now it's just striking out and saying, well, since then, it's been adopted. Something has been adopted to provide for open space.
That's correct.
So it's just explaining the, the latest, uh, kind of, uh, situation.
But not here. Not in the documents in front of us.
Your open space requirements are in the future land use element, which is what we're workshopping tonight. So they have been adopted. The recommendation from the previous data analysis of a couple decades ago has been taken care of in one of the subsequent adoptions that we're not looking at now. It's, it's existing language in the plan. And so we don't need to have it in the data analysis, saying that we need to put it in the plan, because we have.
Okay, I guess. I, I mean, you know, I just, I, I, I'm just not sure where it went. And that's what, as I was trying to go through this, I looked over here and getting into, that was four, six, and four, category four, ends at four, two, or something like that. So it just disappeared.
I'll, I'll see if I can't point it out when I, when I get to it. I'm sort of, sort of focused on the strike-through and underline changes, but-
Gotcha.
-I can, I can try and identify that.
Okay.
So on page twenty-three of one thirty-nine, this is just another sort of, uh, update. There's a to-be-determined date for the new adoption of the plan. And there's a strike-through and underline of a new table of contents, the numbers for which are likely to change in the final version, because the strike-through will be eliminated, which will reduce the document, and then the underlying will be added, which may expand the document. But for now, they're, they adequately reference the numbers that the packet numbers type over. Okay, there's, on page twenty-five, and, and around it, there are some new definitions that we've added to provide additional clarity for terms that are utilized in the comprehensive plan that may need a little bit of clarification. And then-
I had a question real quick about definitions. Um, you mentioned earlier, and, and as I was reading through it, it was a lot of changes from land use regulations and code to just land use regulations. Is there any merit to providing a definition for land use regulations? In the sense of, these are our land use regulations? So that if someone were to open a document and they're reading through it, and it just says, you know, referring to the land use regulations, they could go to the definitions and say, oh, well, these are, are actual ra- land use regulations?
We could certainly do that. It, it's, in a sense, redundant, because that's outlined in the statute, which we have to comply with. But if that's the will of the commission, we can add that.
Okay. Uh, I guess my, my question to that, though, would be, would anybody see the statute if they were to go to this future comprehensive plan? Or would they just open the comprehensive plan and start reading through that, I guess?
I, I'm not sure how anybody would approach the document.
But it's not part, it's not part of the document.
But we referenced the statute within the comprehensive plan numerous times.
Got you, okay.
And the statute's available online.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, as someone, you know, if you just go straight to this plan, I don't know how many people are gonna jump back to the statute. So maybe providing a definition for what land use regulations are within our plan would be important. But that's, like you said, maybe it's redundant. I-
You guys are the planning commission. This is your document, so whatever you feel is important, we're happy to do it. I'm, I'm merely a, a vessel.
So you're, uh, you're looking for adding a definition of-
Land use reg-
Land use regulation.
Yeah, land use regulations, saying, hey, like, yeah, the land use regulations of Madeira Beach are blah, 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 blah. That way, if somebody's reading through this, they can go back and say, if they're like, oh, well, what are the land use regulations? They go to the definition, and it just tells them.
I'm not sure, how, how, how do you define?
Oh, I'll figure something out. Yeah, it, it will reference-
It might be wise.
It will reference your land development code, your code of ordinances, and the chapter of the Florida statute where the definition for land development regulations are provided.
I mean, since our, our purpose in doing this is to clarify for ease of readability-
Yeah.
Um, it would, it might make sense to have that definition, you know, at the beginning of it.
It doesn't hurt anything.
Yeah, I mean, just another half-page paper, but, you know.
Oh, no.
It's online, it's all good.
Make it a sentence.
Okay, a good comment, I appreciate that. I mean, that's, that's what we're here to do, right? Make-
You want to make the document as accessible to the public as possible.
Sure. Okay, I think that's a great idea. So if you'll include that in your, uh, notes, that would be great.
Got it.
All right.
And then, just to start off, on page twenty-seven and one thirty-nine, one of the important things that we've done, and I'll try and point some of these clarification things out as we go, um, we de-witched and de-shelled the document. And that's in keeping with current legal writing practice. You, you, any opportunity for confusion will be, or could be-
Yeah.
-taken by, uh, an opponent, or-
Could be exploited, yeah.
Exactly. It could be exploited by an attorney doing analysis, saying, you know, you're not consistent. So we've been trying to do this with every, um, sort of amendment that we've done over the couple of years that we've been working on the comprehensive plan. And now we've looked at the document entirely and, and made it consistent internally, I hope. I hope we caught it all.
Thank God for finding a replace.
There's a lot. Okay, and on the next page, we're now on twenty-eight of one thirty-nine. We're using a consistent reference to future land use plan categories, because it was all over the place before. And we've also tried to make each of the goals, objectives, and policies inactive. also tried to make each of the goals, objectives, and policies in active voice rather than passive voice so that you've got a clear understanding of what the verb the city's supposed to do entails.
Okay.
As I mentioned on page 29, I think these table 3.0 and 3.1 will change to 4.0 and 4.1 because that's now the number, the element. I missed that before you got your packet. So I just point that out. Also point out, at the bottom of each page, there's a highlighted March 9th because that's the old date. That date will change once we know what the update date is, once it's passed the Board of Commissioners. All right, I'm going to jump ahead. And please, if there's any questions, just interrupt me. I'm happy to answer them. Jump ahead to page 39 of 139. And there, and a couple other places, it referenced, the conference plan, current comprehensive plan referenced FEMA compliant residential construction. There's no such thing. There is a national flood insurance program, which we've changed this to, and I'll spell that out because I think this is the first time that we use NFIP. And that program requires you, as a city, to adopt certain regulations in order to qualify for flood insurance under the national program. And so it's basically a local regulation that you adopt, that the government laid out for you to do so, and by adopting it, you then qualify to be in their program.
Which we've been doing along by adding the free board and all the things that we've been doing.
Yes, sir.
Raising our base flood elevation and all that.
Your construction regulations are basically the Florida Building Code. And if you adopt higher regulations with regard to the NFIP, again, those are your regulations. And those help you get community rating service points to reduce the discount or increase the discount for flood insurance under the National Flood Insurance Program. And I mentioned the LDC versus the land development regulations. On page 49, we have consistently referred to this comprehensive plan as opposed to, well, you do say this comprehensive plan, you also say the comprehensive plan in lowercase letters, and the plan. And you have a number of plans, so the plan is very problematic. So we're keeping that consistent. On page 54 of 139, we have, in policy 5.2.5.3, in the middle of the page, eliminated the street projects that have been completed. On page 62 of 139, I have, on policy 8.1.3.1, identified a word that needs to be eliminated, and that is "on" right before the underlying shorelines. One little cleanup. On the following page, 63, we've eliminated policy 8.1.3.7 because it's redundant. And I have a bracketed note in there of where the policy that repeats it is. And that's the policy that we've decided to keep. And you'll see that, beginning on page 64 and over to 65, policy 8.1.5.3 basically says all of the things the other policy does, plus some additional language that makes it, I think, more competent. Same thing with policy 8.1.5.8. We've eliminated that because policy 8.1.3.4 on the previous page captures that language also. So we don't need any extra policies that say the same thing that other policies do. While we're trying to make the document more accessible, we're trying to reduce its volume as well. And that way, it's not quite as intimidating. Yours is pretty good, actually. There were some questions about a map LU4. That's your future land use map. We're not making any changes to that map at this point as part of the year, but it is referenced. We haven't included it in the packet because it doesn't change and it's one less sheet of paper to include, but that's available online. You know, it's part of your current plan. Another redundant policy was policy 8.1.6.1, and that's captured, same language is captured in policy 8.1.5.3 on the previous pages. With regard to the data and analysis, I'm now on page 99 of 139. And as I mentioned, with regard to the comprehensive plan itself, this table of contents, once all the strike-through underline has been accepted, these numbers are very likely to change. And we have modified a lot of the tables in terms of updating the data and analysis. That's why there's a lot of strike-through and underline, mostly underline, in the tables. One of the major things in the data analysis has been a complete overhaul of your mobility aspects because a lot in transportation has changed since this data and analysis On page 127 of 139, and also in the capital improvements element, we have not been able to merge the capital improvements element list of projects into this document yet. I only had a PDF version and I don't have PDF powers, but that was all adopted in the ordinance that follows in this packet on page 133 of 139. That's ordinance 2022-07. You saw this as a commission before it went to the board and it's now been adopted. And so what we'll do is take that adopted and insert it into the new comprehensive plan as well as the data and analysis. So that will be up to date. And that concludes my brief but spectacular overview of the comprehensive plan.
Fabulous. I can't imagine how maddening it is to go through this and try and find all those mistakes.
Oh, you probably can.
I probably can. I deal with contracts all day long, so I sort of can. No, but we appreciate the effort, really. It'll make everything, hopefully, much more readable, understandable for those who are trying to accomplish their tasks here. So appreciate that.
So any questions on anything that we've discussed, but particularly the focus tonight is on what is probably your primary element in the comprehensive plan, which is the future land use element, and then on housing, which there's not a lot you can do about housing on Madeira Beach.
I don't see anything that's made a substantive change that would warrant any concern. At least that's from my perspective. So if anybody's got any other questions or input that we need to bring to Mr. Murphy, please feel free.
In your review, if there's anything that you've seen that isn't in the plan, that you would like to add, or anything that's in the plan that doesn't belong there anymore, this is kind of the time to address that. And of course, the board will have their opportunity as well through their workshop and their two public hearings, one of which will come after the state review. And so there may be some state input as well.
So what does our timeline look like for this? I mean, obviously, it's a lot of data. And we've gone through all these different phases of the comprehensive plan, or the stages of the comprehensive plan to review. And I know it's a little bit overwhelming to have all of that now, you know, basically come to a head in addition to all the other things we've had come before us. So what does our timeline look like? Do we have any additional time for us to, as a group or individually, before another meeting, say, hey, oh, we found something?
Until the board adopts it, you always have an opportunity to provide additional input. And, you know, this is the strongest partnership between this commission and the Board of Commissioners for the city is the comprehensive plan.
Okay. And we're not under any obligation, or are we, to have another public forum for any changes or anything we see that we might recommend be included in this because we're just a recommendatory body? So really, anything that would be substantive would then go before the Board of Commissioners?
Absolutely.
To be addressed at that time?
The only thing is the caveat that I gave at the beginning. If Mr. Trask finds something substantive in the ordinance...
Sure.
...that he wants to change, you know, that would be something that would be potentially coming back. But if he says, you know, we want to number all the sections of each element, you know, a different way, that's not a substantive change.
Sure.
That's mechanical. And so that wouldn't cause us any return.
What kind of timeline are we looking at as a planning commission to say, you know, to absorb all of it now and say to you, I see a change, and make a recommendation by either sending you an email or a phone call saying, can we include this?
Yeah, it would be prior to the transmittal hearing because if we make a change, that would have to go to the state. And so what we're looking at now, I believe, is the Board of Commissioners workshop is on the 25th of this month.
Okay.
Then they'll have their first reading at their official board meeting, not the workshop, but the actual board meeting, in February. Transmit after that. It goes both to Pinellas County for their review, which adds some additional time to that sort of window between transmittal and adoption. The state has, I think, a 60 or 90-day window. And once they've provided all of their comments and the county's provided all their comments, then it will be revised accordingly and go to an adoption hearing before the board. If nothing is amiss.
Okay. So the shortest distance between two points, we need to have our complete understanding or any ideas back to Mr. Murphy. Basically, by the 25th of January would be best.
Would be best.
So that that can be workshopped.
Exactly.
With our Board of Commissioners. If we see anything that needs to be changed so that in their review, that's included and then we're sorted done with our portion of it, right? Our recommendations. So taking that into consideration.
For another seven years or...
Yeah.
Until something else changes.
A mayor may not still be sitting here. But so we have until the 25th. Basically, would be the time for you guys to really dive into this, relook at it. I mean, I know we've all spent considerable amount of time looking at all of these different sections within all the data that Mr. Murphy's provided. But now it's time to look at the big picture and get the whole ball of string together. And if you have any changes now, by the 25th, make those recommendations.
And if you would, by protocol, make them to Mr. Morris.
Okay, sorry.
He'll convey them to me.
Perfect.
I'd forward it to him, but don't, wait, Mr. Murphy, don't they have to make a recommendation for it to go to the BOC workshop?
Tonight, what we're looking for you is a motion to recommend...
Sure.
...that the Board of Commissioners transmit the year to the state.
Okay. But if we were to find any changes, we could still...
You're a recommending body.
Okay.
So you're recommending transmittal. If you come up with other things between now and, let's say, the workshop, to be positive, yeah, we'll revise accordingly.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Sure?
Do you want to have a special meeting? Can we all get together on this one particular thing in one night and just hash it out and be done?
Hi.
What do you say? I'm open for suggestions. I mean, you know, we can either pick a date now, or if you want to take some time to review it for a day or two and try to pick a date.
But if we all go through it at the same time?
We should have all gone through it before we got here tonight.
Well, we did, but...
And been able to present any kind of questions that we have. I mean, I feel like I've read it. I feel like I've been schooled on it. We've talked about it. I feel like I understand the changes in the strike-throughs and the adjustment in verbiage to bring it more to what it should be. I personally don't have any questions. I'd be happy to come and sit in a meeting if anyone here feels like they need to. But I definitely feel like if you had issues, you should have came with them to this meeting today to be, that's why we're here.
Yeah, and the other thing is, we would have to advertise it in the newspaper seven days in advance, but we'd have to send out the ad significantly sooner than that. Since it's the 9th and that was the workshop on the 25th, or...
It'd be a squeeze.
Yeah, I just don't know how it would work. And then it would cost additional money to do another ad on top of that.
From my perspective, I feel the same way. I mean, I've got a stack on my desk of all of our stuff, you know, and have gone through it a couple times as we've been adding on and adding on, sort of cascading. And I personally don't have any burning issues that I see, but I just wanted to throw it out there in the event that somebody saw a change. The only one substantive is Mr. Larue's recommendation to just add a definition of, for land development regulation. Other than that, I don't have a burning issue myself. I mean, if you guys do, you know, we can try and accommodate it. But otherwise, I think we're probably pretty good. The other option would be to speak to your commissioners and say, hey, here's what I saw, you know, as a public comment, when they are addressing that issue, and they could make the change at that time if they see fit.
And you should also have an opportunity at the workshop, at the Board of Commissioners workshop, if, you know, there's a burning desire.
That is probably the best route to go because I think we have too many mechanics to get to where we, if we were to try and hold an official meeting. I think it's been very well covered. I mean, the explanations have been wonderful. I mean, it's been very, made very clear how we're proceeding. So I don't really, personally don't see the need to call a special meeting for that. But we can voice concerns individually if you have them at that workshop when our commissioners meet on the 25th.
Yeah, and please, if you do have thoughts, transmit them to...
Ahead of time.
To Andrew so we can have a chance to, you know, help.
Sure, so I can ask and answer, right?
Yeah.
Understood. Okay.
I've got mine now.
Okay.
Page 43 is the new one. Page 106 is the old. And it's dealing with open spaces.
Yes.
And I guess I don't understand, how did that just go away?
So the recommendation in the past was to adopt regulations regarding open space and buffering. And Objective 4.1.16 addresses open space and the policies thereunder. And...
Doesn't do anything.
Well, I think what it does is directs the land development regulations to provide what that will be. And that's what the recommendation was from the data and analysis from a couple decades ago. And you have land development regulations that require certain percentages of open space. They also address impervious surface ratios, inflo area ratios, and certain buffering requirements. So those are now...
That's Section 110, isn't it?
I believe so.
What was the second page in the data analysis that you were talking about?
Well, page 106 is where the open space used to be.
That's where we, well, it was never there. That was just a recommendation of what to do in the comprehensive plan. The data and analysis is supporting document. It is not regulatory. The comprehensive plan is regulatory to the extent that it regulates. Generally, what it does, if there's something that is a burning desire in the community, and I'll pick another example. There are communities that have height limitations, you know, and three stories above parking is sacred to them. And they put that in their comprehensive plan. Sometimes they put it in their charter, depending on how sacred it is. And then it functions as law. But generally, the comprehensive plan directs land development regulations to actually sort out what that law will be. The comprehensive plan is more of a plan. The land development regulations are law. If the comprehensive plan has a mandatory statement, then that's a legal law statement. You must comply. There are very few instances in here where it is must, but there are few. They have a lot to do with the nature of the barrier island being built out and having been developed with smaller lots and things like that. So there are some things that are adamant in the comprehensive plan. They're also in the land development regulations. It's generally, you know, the way it's done to make sure everybody's on the same page. But for the most part, your plan directs the commission to do something, will do something. You generally don't require yourselves must do something because that gives you no flexibility. And as a governing board, the Board of Commissioners has a certain amount of flexibility in terms of what they want to implement and what may be more advisory to them, or when they're going to get around to affording something that they have to do because there's a budget constraint. It's a complicated situation, local government. But for the most part, what that data analysis was saying is the comp plan ought to address open space. And so the comp plan has addressed open space under this Objective 4.1.16 and the policies thereunder. And then the land development regulations actually spell out what buffers are required, what percentage of open space is required, all of those. And that is in your land development code.
So the back sections is not what our comprehensive plan was?
No. No, it's what your comprehensive plan was based on. Back when they adopted the two thousand and eight version, that was the data and analysis that supported it. And like I say, it hasn't been updated for a very long time, so one of the key factors that Ms. Portell wanted to do is update this data and analysis, because your plan sits on that foundation, and if the foundation is twenty, thirty years old, and your plan's becoming current, then there's a conflict. And we don't want to have a conflict between our data and analysis and our comprehensive plan, because very likely, the Department of Economic Opportunity would point out to us that they're inconsistent.
Good. Anybody want to make a motion that we transmit this to the Board of Commissioners?
I will make a motion that we transmit the EAR to the Board of Commissioners.
So can I get you to modify that a little bit?
Yes. Tell me what I need to say.
What I'd like you to say is that the local planning agency, the Planning Commission, recommends that the Board of Commissioners transmit the EAR to the state.
The local planning commission recommends that the Board of Commissioners transmit the EAR to the state.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Didn't they have the definition that they wanted?
Including to add the definition.
Yep.
Yes.
Land development regulation. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, we have a motion and a second. We can call the roll, please.
No.
Oh, we have public comment, thank you very much, forgot about that. I knew, I always do that. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
I had a question. They were talking about the view areas, so last summer, I think, the commission went ahead and passed land development regulations concerning side setbacks and that type of thing. So is that in conflict with the comprehensive plan right now? Are we changing the comprehensive plan to match the LDRs? No?
No, I don't think there's a conflict. I think that the, and I wasn't involved in that ordinance, but I recall at the time that that was to provide a different quantification of what those view corridors needed to be, what the setback needed to be. This is just requiring that the land development regulations address that. So that, I believe, was found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Because it used to be, I think, that hotels had to have one-third of their land as a view corridor.
But not in the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
That's in the land development.
Right, it was in the land development.
Right, so that implements.
But was that in conflict with the current comprehensive plan? Not the one that's being proposed, but with the old comprehensive plan?
We're not proposing any changes in that regard, so I think that it is consistent with the plan as it stands and the plan at the time.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment that I had is that, and a lot of you weren't here, twenty, twenty-five years ago, maybe, Andrew, can you tell me, when was the Dewanee Plan? What year was that?
It was like oh-two.
It was a long time ago.
Two thousand, yeah.
So.
I was here for that.
Yeah, I think it's two of us. So what that involved was a series of charrettes. They brought in an urban planner in, and they, it was for the comprehensive plan, what did the citizens want? And so they, one of the things was no buildings over four stories, you know, that type of thing. And they wanted to go ahead and make it very walkable, and a lot of things they wanted to address. We had a series of charrettes. We had several hundred people that were down at Madeira Beach Middle School in the auditorium listening to that. We had Karen Seal, who was the county commissioner, come down and sat there and listened, because it was also going to be going to the county. We haven't had any of that with this comprehensive plan. Yes, it needs revising, I absolutely agree, but we're lacking a lot of citizen input as to what they would like the city see the city look like, you know, in the future here. And that's one of the things that's been lacking this whole process, is that there's not been enough citizen input. We had citizen meeting with Linda Portell last year sometime, Andrew, wasn't it? You were there.
Uh, we.
Beginning of twenty twenty-two, I think it was, or at the end of twenty-one?
Yeah.
And, I mean, we had a small group of citizens show up. This is not something that people jump up and down on, but if you explain it in simple terms and go through the different, what is the view that the citizens like to see the city move to, and then incorporate that into the comprehensive plan? I think that's the only thing that's lacking in this whole process.
Okay, perfect. And that was some good timing, too. Great, thank you. Appreciate that. So pardon me for going out of order in our order of events, and we, thank you for reminding me for public comment as well, but as it stands, we do have a motion, and we have a second to recommend that we, that we move the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one one to the Board of Commissioners for approval with the change to add, oops, to add the land development regulation definition.
Chair Wykoff, I could, before you called a question, who seconded? I wasn't paying attention.
Mr. LaRue?
Okay.
Got it?
He was out of my frame of view, thank you.
A motion and a second. Thank you for clarifying that for our notes, so our minutes will be accurate. Okay. Having done all of that, in a little bit out of order, but I appreciate your patience, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Collinoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayer?
Yes.
And Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, so we have unanimous approval for that, thank you very much, that was very good.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Murphy, appreciate all the time and effort that went into this, for sure. Any old business from our planning commission? Seeing none? Any further administrative or staff presentations? Okay, under discussion, planning commission discussion, one of the things we probably should discuss is an update to the land development regulations at some point? Mr. Murphy? Have any input on that?
Based on my familiarity with your land development code and other land development regulations, they need kind of the same cosmetic work as well, as well as looking at potential redundancies and potential conflicts. Because they've been, what I would call, band-aided over time, which is not uncommon. An issue arises, code is drafted to address that issue, it doesn't necessarily look comprehensively at the entire thing, so, yeah, that's something that you probably want to consider.
I think we get sometimes a silo effect, right, where this only happens right here in a vacuum, and it's, nature abhors a vacuum, right? So what's our best vehicle by which to go about that?
I think that's probably a conversation to have with the Community Development Director and staff, and see about, you know, where, what their budgetary constraints are, what their time constraints are. But it is something that should be done. It would be, I think, very helpful, particularly to code enforcement, to have a code that's internally consistent.
Okay, so that's something, I will reach out to the Community Development Department and see if we can get that on our agenda to discuss on how we can best bring that together, make it cohesive. We're cleaning everything else up, you know, harkening back to the comments about the plan from Dewanee, it seems like a lot has been done, but only in little bits and pieces, and it's starting to be fragmented, and we need to kind of bring that all back together.
It may be time for revisioning plan for the city, you know.
Agreed.
You're built out horizontally, and as we discussed when we were doing the proportionate share development fees, you know, your new development is going to be going out to the edges of the setbacks, going up as high as possible, because that's how you justify the expense of the land.
Sure.
But that wasn't part of our charge, and, you know, how you go about that is one thing. I will say with regard to the mobility aspects of the Dewanee Plan, which was very heavily influenced on mobility, many of those you incorporated when we revised the mobility plan for the proportionate share development fees. And so most of those policies that you wanted to keep, and that the board wanted to keep, are in the mobility section, mobility element of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I don't think that Dewanee Plan was wasted or forgotten.
It sat for a while.
It did sit idle, fermenting, and then, you know, a lot of it's been built in, as we're seeing, and part of that, frankly, I think, is what's coming up with the Johns Pass Activity Center, that's part of it, and the walkability factors and the activity centers within the city. So that's, even though it's an old plan, it has merit.
Oh, definitely.
For sure. And I think it's, we're working our way towards, you know, more modern era Madeira Beach.
When Ms. Portell became the director and I came on as consultant, that was one of the first things that we identified as like, here's just some real low-hanging fruit, that if it's still valid, and it seemed for the most part that the Planning Commission and the board felt that it was, we incorporated that into the comprehensive plan.
Nicely done. Okay. Let's see, our next meeting, does anyone have the schedule in front of them?
February sixth.
February sixth?
I won't be here.
Okay. All right, so our next meeting is February sixth, right here, same time, same place, and without further ado, we'll call this meeting adjourned.